Did we lose the echo? That's better. Okay. Thank you for that. So, our purpose for this public meeting is to share draft of the zoning ordinance. And that's the version from April 21st. And both with the Planning Commission.
Speaker off, but I don't know if I'm hearing anything.
Yes, I can.
Please.
Yes.
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 In in a township, you have to accommodate for a grocery store somewhere in the township, but you can dictate how that where that grocery store goes and what regulations are applied to it. So maybe there's a buffer in front of the grocery store between the sidewalk, or parking is maybe in the back, or whatever regulations you want to apply. So that was a big part of your zoning ordinance because you're missing some uses. And then we also wanted to put them all into a table, as Jeff had mentioned, a really user-friendly table, so it's a one kind of glance at you can find the use you're looking for, find the district, and understand if it is permitted in that district by right, by special exception, or conditional use, or not permitted. The important thing with that is that if a township does not permit a certain use in the township, a developer can can basically sue the township or seek something called a curative amendment, which means that they'd be able to put that use anywhere and do it any way that they like. So with a zoning ordinance, by having a really robust use section and use regulations for specific uses, it gives the township more authority to get the the types of uses where they want and how they want. That was a big one. Then next, I just want to go over briefly the proposed zoning map. I'm not going to go into a ton of detail. But just a quick overview, because we will be talking about some of these districts as we go through. I'm going to keep talking while the the map comes up. But there are ten zoning districts proposed on the map, four mixed-use districts, three residential districts, and three special districts. So these districts consider use form, like the existing use in form that's, you know, happening right now, as well as the desired use in form based on your goals and the comprehensive plan, as well as existing infrastructure. Oh, perfect. Great. All right, so that's the zoning map. I'm going to go briefly into each of the types. So if you want to go to the next slide. So the mixed-use districts, there are four mixed-use districts. The innovation district, the purpose here is really to have an adaptable environment that could accommodate a range of uses, so kind of thinking about like, you know, maybe a medical campus, or kind of a live-work-play-type campus, commercial, light industrial, recreational activities. That's kind of that blue area. The mixed-use corridor, which you find primarily along Route 41, is to provide kind of a mix of commercial office with some residential to allow for those services and retail uses to be kind of accessed easily by car, but have it kind of within proximity to the residential areas. The Village Gateway, which is a little difficult to see on this map or on the screen, but it's the darker red kind of on the outskirts of Tough Kenniman along Baltimore Pike. This is kind of like an entrance into the the village. So kind of thinking a step down in terms of scale from the mixed-use corridor, providing still like for retail and commercial and residential uses, but on a smaller scale than the mixed-use corridor. And then that leads into the Village Center, the area in and around Tough Kenniman Village. That's really meant to kind of be a walkable hub accessible by residents and and visitors. The next set of districts, real quickly, are the residential districts. There are three of them. They will be on the screen soon. The residential flex is that darker brown area primarily between Baltimore Pike and Route 41. This district is intended to achieve a balance between, you know, residential growth and also kind of conservation and open space by kind of promoting more of that cluster-type development, but also accommodating housing types that aren't permitted in the other zoning districts. So those missing middle housing types that the township has identified as a goal. So missing middle being everything kind of between a a single-family detached unit to, you know, a larger-scale apartment. So we're talking, you know, a duplex, a twin home, a triplex, quadplex, those types of housing. Oh, yes.
Wouldn't it be easier if we went one by one and asked the questions about one? Because you're going to go through all ten of these things, and then you're going to, you're not going to remember what you wanted to ask about first. It just don't seem like, may it doesn't seem like the best way to go. I don't know how.
I defer to the chair. So this was mainly to give an overview of the map before going into the focus areas, but I defer to the chair on on.
You're talking about different areas in township that were residential. There's not a whole lot of residential area that you can have in this township. I mean, did you, did anybody ever talk to a developer about it at all?
We we did. That was that was, and that's one of the things that you'll notice. You'll notice, looking at the map, is is there's there's areas where you have certain kinds of activities along major corridors, and there's some areas where you see residential housing. And there was a lot of discussion around where we could do things, both because of the topography, as well as existing infrastructure that would support the kinds of development that might happen in the future, whether that's commercial, or industrial, or residential. And we did get some good feedback from developers who attended some of our meetings.
Yeah, well, you know, the the point of that is, like, developers got the time for a one-acre lot with a house on it, probably gone. Nobody wants to mow grass, and they don't want one acre to take care of. So it's more complex. And typically, it ends up being four residential units on a lot, or something small like that. And and I don't mean to take up a lot of time here, but, you know, I I don't see where these areas are, because some of the things that have interfered with it is pieces of property that have been, had the development rights sold. There's not a lot of them, but it's kind of in the middle where there where there was some, which only makes sense. You only buy development rights where it can be developed. So that all being said, and then the other thing that that comes into play here is sewer and water. Sewer and water don't go through this township. It just stays in one end of it. And if you're going down through Lannenberg, I I guess, what's that, Laurel Heights Road, it stops on Laurel Heights Road, goes into Somerset Lake, because they needed it to start with. But after that, you know, there's a lot of open space down there. It'll probably never be developed because runs sewer and water to it, it'll never get it.
Yeah, that's that's an excellent point. That's certainly one of the factors that were brought into consideration is you you don't want to provide something by making it a certain color on the map if, as a practical matter, it'll never happen because there isn't sufficient infrastructure to support it. So if you look at the, what is that? Is it buff? Or is that, I'm colorblind, so it's really tough for me. The light yellow, that's all residential low-density, which is people with large enough property to have septic.
Septic, yeah.
As an example.
One-acre lots, yeah.
But I will say, on on the website, there is a map. In addition to being able to compare existing zoning and future zoning, there's another map where you can toggle on and off layers. One of those layers is water, like hydrants. One of the layers that the zoning task force had access to was sewer. It's not publicly available just because of an agreement that we had to sign with Aqua, but it's something that we were able to look at and study. So in the areas with residential flex, I think originally, kind of, we had some residential flex, that brownish color, kind of extending south, and then scaled it back based on a variety of factors, public input, kind of non-alignment with the original goal, which was to really keep stuff focused around the corridors. And then also that sewer. So while there might not be existing sewer in some of that core area, its proximity is a lot closer than, say, what's going on in in the south. Something too, in the zoning ordinance, there is obviously stipulation that while there may be minimum, you know, lot size requirements and some maximum lot size requirements, depending, I think, in the residential flex, if you don't have sewer or access to public utility, then of course it defaults to the one-acre lot.
It it has happened. It has happened. One of the very first developments that were built in New Garden Township were built by Wilkinson across from his farm on top of a hill, and they got a common sewer plant. Now, it's not a plant, but it's a common drain field off that hill, and they got the water from Delaware, because it didn't have no water down there, so they got it over the hill. So, I mean, it just, it just, you got, you can talk about all you want, but I think you're right. You can't put a color on a map if you're not going to use it.
Yeah.
You know. Are we cutting the number of zoning areas down, or are we increasing the number of zoning areas?
I I think we skinned it a little bit, you know, but 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 not a lot. We may have gone, what do we see there? Ten?
It's the same, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah. I would say it like, kind of, the the main differences in the zoning districts, first of all, it's like the intentionality of the geography of them, and then also based on the goals of of the township, and then also the flexibility within the mixed-use districts and the residential flex district specifically. So just real quick, kind of rounding out the residential districts, residential medium density, residential low density are kind of the the traditional single-family detached, for the most part, neighborhoods. But the difference is kind of the lot sizes and setbacks that are permitted in each of those districts. And then you get down to the special districts, which are kind of the the outliers. You know, obviously, the the area that the airport is is part of is its own district. The enterprise districts, which we'll be talking about in a little bit more detail, it's in purple. It's kind of like an industrial district to really encourage economic growth, innovation, job creation, manufacturing, technology-based enterprises, et cetera. And then your your parks and open space are really that, not every single open space in the township. It's it's publicly owned, larger swaths of open space. One of the layers on that reference layer map is open space. So the zoning task force looked at areas that are protected under certain, like, easements, agricultural easements, private easements related to kind of developments. Those open space areas, those are incorporated into the the zoning districts that surround them because ultimately with the agricultural easements, some of them could be removed in the future, and you don't want to take away property rights from the individual or the property owner. And so that's why you don't see green everywhere. Parks and open space are permitted in every district and are encouraged. Just it's not its own unique kind of recreation, open space district. Okay, so with that, we are a little behind schedule, but I think we can make up some time. So with focus topic one, we are really looking at the mushroom operations that are, you know, throughout New Garden Township and have been, you know, part of this township for a long time, and the enterprise district. So this proposed ordinance and map only permit agriculture-related operations, mushroom-related. That's the official kind of term that we're using for mushroom operations in the enterprise district. This enterprise district is nearby to Route 41 and in an area with already a concentration of some mushroom operation uses. And this proposed approach by keeping it in this one district and kind of along a penguin and Gap Newport Road corridors really responds to the goals that the township identified in terms of the existing challenge of by right ag facilities that are within residential districts and a lack of a designated ag district for industrial-grade agricultural production. Also, something important to note, because of some couple of comments that we'll go into, is a lot of, when you look at your existing zoning map, a lot of existing mushroom operations are within R1 districts and are are non-conforming uses as they are today. So on the next slide, we have some public feedback that we received. So we, you know, we heard from the public and also from the the mushroom industry and that there are a lot of existing mushroom operations outside of the proposed zoning district, you know, what happens to them. There were some concerns about use, our use definitions. So we originally had composting, mushroom-related composting as an accessory-only use to mushroom production. And this has been discussed with the task force previously, and we are, the task force is in agreement that composting can be a standalone use that would be permitted in the enterprise district. And then another definition concern we heard is that kind of, there are a lot of different uses that are ancillary to the mushroom industry that are maybe not covered by the existing uses that we have. So proposing a kind of mushroom service provider use and definition that would be permitted in the enterprise district to kind of be a catch-all for those those unique industries. We also heard from members of the mushroom industry that there is a desire to have the enterprise district, where mushroom operations would be permitted, extend kind of south of Star Road. So kind of, but like underneath where that existing purple is now. So on the next slide, our team's recommendations, and then we'd love to hear from you, is certainly to add a definition for mushroom service providers. This is kind of a unique situation, and I think that that use is appropriate in this case. But we don't recommend any edits to the existing use permissions and where they're allowed and what district for mushroom operations. And we don't propose any changes to the boundaries of the enterprise district for a couple of reasons. The first being that, you know, this, while there are mushroom operations throughout the township, a lot of them are non-conforming as it is. This proposed zoning map would not change that. They would continue to to be non-conforming and be able to continue operating. And then any expansion of their use would need to seek a variance. And then by designating that specific district, it really allows the township to minimize future disturbance and kind of be use-based nuisances on residential areas. And then finally, we hear, I'm not a lawyer myself, but we hear a lot from solicitors that a zoning district that kind of uses a road, especially as a boundary, is a little bit more dispensable than drawing a boundary just solely between a parcel. So that Star Road boundary really felt like a a natural and suitable boundary for this district. So with that, I'd love to open it up to the planning commission and hear your thoughts on where your head's at regarding this specific issue.
Thoughts or reactions?
Along with this, let me start with into uses by right.
Yes.
I think that's more important than most things, because over the years, how many people have come in? Well, you wouldn't know that much. Come into this township for the littlest thing. I remember down in Hartford years ago, for the for the people to put a deck on, they had to go through zoning to get it, to put a deck on. Then it was changed to, what is that, a third district? What's that down there now? It's called?
R2?
What is it?
R2?
No, the one that's, no, what's Hartford? Hartford is in, it's mostly K-11.
Unified Development.
Unified Development, that's what I'm saying. And and then there was a Unified Development III that we that we passed when I was, when I was on board. And that was so, for those trivial things like putting a deck on the back of your house, they could do that by right. So, I mean, things to me are most important are, if if you're going to have an area where where it could be developed, then you got to kind of spell it out. Let's make it, you know, uses by right. That way, you don't go through months and months and months of township solicitors with the the applicant's lawyers and over and over and over. I mean, I went through some of these things, there was fourteen months of it, you know. So i- it it just, it just never stopped. And that's why it's more important, that I think, for the township. Because, you know, all these things, whatever cost years ago, costs three times as much now. So that's what I think's most important.
Absolutely. I I'm happy to respond from the task force, or I don't know if anyone on the task force wants to.
Yeah, I know. We we spent a lot of time talking about some of the details like that. And I think our our table clearly stipulates the four conditions. It's not permitted where there's, you know, there's there's no marking in that that spot on the graph. There's a P for permitted, which would be used by right, subject to the stipulations in the zoning rules themselves. And then we had a conditional approval, which would have to come to zoning and probably planning too, I think. Board of Supervisors. Yeah. And what was the special, special exception?
What would be a zoning hearing board? Yeah, so I I will say that, like, that's something, when we looked at the districts and the uses, the part of determining whether something's not permitted, permitted by right, conditional use, special exception. The FAQ document also goes into a lot of detail about what those things are, because I know it's not a term that's super familiar. It was kind of like, the first question the task force asks themselves is, what is the purpose of this district? If the purpose of this district is to encourage a certain type of use, then, and that use doesn't have a lot of extenuating impacts, then, you know, if the permission by right is appropriate. If if it's something that wants to be, you know, encouraged in that district, but it's kind of like a unique, I'm trying to think of a situation, something where you would maybe want to heighten level of review because of the impacts, then like, we would look at special exception or conditional use. Oh, I was blanking on one other thing. Oh, so also, one thing to note with permitted by right, that some uses are permitted by right and just have to meet all the other, like, regulations in the zoning ordinance. There are some uses that are permitted by right that have specific use regulations. So, for example, like, a drive-through-only facility might be permitted by right in the mixed-use corridor, but they, there are use-specific regulations about how that has to be cited, you know, where the buffers for that, that are unique to that use in particular. So there are kind of guardrails, but not necessarily. It would still be kind of an administrative review, rather than the than going to the board or the zoning hearing board for a special approval.
Well, that's quite true, because our shopping center, which is only shop center we have, like the Giant Shopping Center and the one across the street, New Garden Shopping Center, they were never allowed to have drive-throughs. It was a zoning issue. Well, if you don't have drive-throughs in those places, where do you have them at? There was a bank there. They had, they wanted to put a drive-through. They had to get to go through zoning. And that was months and months for just a little.
And and if it's in an area that you are aiming to kind of direct auto-oriented uses to, like, you know, drive-throughs, then that should be permitted, you know, by right, rather than, whereas if it's maybe in more of like the Tough Kenniman Village area, that's where you're trying to be like a little bit more walkable, then you might want, you know, either not to permit it or to have a heightened level of permission.
I noticed that before we had the R3 zoning on the on the on the north side of the railroad tracks. Now, you have, well, it's not, I don't know what you call it, man. You call it?
Village.
Village Center?
Village.
That goes all the way up the hill. Is that right?
It it goes up the hill a little bit, and it it basically extends the center out to kind of create more of a a center and a hub for that, for the village. We looked at, with the walkability goals and kind of associated with Tough Kenniman, if you only have a very specific area, like what's on your current map, like designated for that higher-density residential, or, you know, mix of mix of uses, there's not enough, like, area there to maybe get that critical mass that you need to support that type of district. So we looked at extending it to to widen the opportunity in the area for that, those types of uses in that form.
Bob, you mind if I make a comment while you're looking?
Yeah, go ahead. No, go ahead.
Thanks. Hi, Samantha. For the for the mushroom, you're right, many of the mushroom plants currently are in residential zones. But there are some that are in the UD, Unified Development. And where we, where those are now going to become residential flex, then those wouldn't be, they would be non-conforming, and they wouldn't be able to expand. I I think that this area's heritage and its identity is linked to the mushroom industry. And I wouldn't want to see that terribly limited. I think that some of the challenges created will get addressed over time. You know, there's coming to the nuisance where lots of residential development happened. And of course, it's next to mushroom farms and mushroom plants. And I think that, again, those challenges will hopefully be worked out over time. But I don't want to see some of the families that have been here zoned out of what they have, are existing operations. And I'm sure we're going to discuss it a little more when we get to the Limestone Road area. But I just want to make that point, that I think that there are some that are not in residential currently, and they will become non-conforming in the new residential districts.
Any other feedback or thoughts?
I think we're, because we're pressed a bit for time, I think we're going to save the public reaction till the end. And then we'll work through these three focus topics with the planning commission to make sure that we get them covered, and then we'll open up for public commentary. Thank you. Okay, well, please save it till the end of the meeting, and then we'll we'll address your your issue with everybody else, okay? Thank you.
So we can certainly come back to that, and we'll probably have more discussion on that later. But the second topic that's really emerged, and we've received a lot of public comment on, is that specific area in the box on, in the southeast of the township between Route 41, Southwood Road, along Limestone Road. So the task force, really, when looking at this area, had to balance a few things. So balancing township goals, impact on surrounding property owners, the rights of the existing property owners, as Sam brought up, like not taking away existing development rights from the property owners in the UD district, along with consistency with surrounding land use. So we have two scenarios that we presented at the public outreach meeting and that the the zoning task force have talked about that we'd like to hear your feedback on. But just to set the scene, on the next page, we just have a kind of a zoomed-in version. So this is the existing zoning map on the left, just aerial imagery. On the right, the majority of the parcels in this area that abut Limestone Road, Southwood Road and Route 41 are currently zoned as highway commercial. It's that blue area, and then the UD is kind of surrounding that area. These districts permit a variety of uses, including industrial and commercial uses. The existing land use in that area is a mix of kind of limited residential along Rocky Springs Road, mushroom production, as Sam mentioned, storage, manufacturing, auto and equipment repair, and lumber supply. So kind of a mismatch of uses. On the next slide, there are the two scenarios that we kind of want to present to you and get your feedback on. So on the left side, this is what's on the most recent version of the zoning map, dated April, I think, 11, 2025. So this, in this scenario, you have the mixed-use corridor, kind of that orange area extending from 41 along Limestone, you know, in this, and then residential flex kind of surrounding that. In this scenario, the residential flex district, like, kind of reserved for areas off the main corridor for those, like, the residential uses. for those like the residential uses, whereas along Limestone, it would be that mix of commercial and residential. On the right-hand side is the second scenario. This looks quite different, as you can see. In this scenario, if this scenario maintains the existing zoning district's mix of uses more, and the flexibility of uses, by making it the innovation district. So a mix of industrial, commercial, some residential if needed. And the intent of this district would be for like a larger-scale campus-like facility that would really bring employment opportunities to the township, or continuation of the existing uses that are there. So in terms of public feedback on the next slide, we, we presented these scenarios, there was not a overwhelming kind of support for either one. One didn't emerge more than the other, but we did just hear in general about this area, concerns about traffic and transportation infrastructure in this area, the concerns about either of those districts, the mixed-use corridor or the innovation district, and the impacts on nearby residential areas. But we also heard from residents about kind of a need for more approximate services, like medical services within state boundaries. And then also, we did have some property owners from that area attend the last meeting and express kind of their desire to maintain their property rights and be able to sell or develop this property as they are able to currently under the existing zoning. So our recommendation, the consultant team's recommendation, after weighing kind of all these components, is to, we are proposing scenario two as probably a scenario that's most suitable, because it's maintaining the existing zoning map's flexibility of uses, kind of bringing a much-needed kind of service, employment opportunities to the township. And that it would be kind of a lower impact in terms of traffic usage than a mixed-use corridor, like mixed-use corridor is more like that retail service in and out, whereas the innovation district, we're really encouraging more of that campus-like development. And then this is supporting the township's goals to address the challenge of a lack of mixed-use, planned use, and blended zoning districts to help with revitalization. So I know that was a rapid-fire kind of overview, but would love to hear your thoughts or gut reaction.
I would piggy, piggyback on what I said earlier about, yeah, the innovation district would allow continued use and potential expansion, and it would be less dense. If it was a campus-style zone, then you'd have more folks there in the daytime, but not at nighttime. And it wouldn't be retail, which, as we know, folks go to Delaware because of the no sales tax. So it's a different use overall.
Yeah, that was one of the, the issue that you mentioned earlier, Sam, about being sensitive to the rich history of the township and the very long-lived nature of a lot of the businesses here and people that live here. I mean, that, that dynamic informed much of the conversation throughout the development of this, and in particular, this, this question right along Limestone. Any other thoughts, reactions, questions?
Okay. We'll move to the, the third and last kind of big topic, was the residential flex area that we started to talk about earlier. This is really addressing that goal for providing a variety of housing types that the township identified as a need. It's also in your comprehensive plan, and your zoning ordinance is supposed to kind of codify your comprehensive plan goals. And this also supports data that we've received from the Chester County Planning Commission regarding changing demographic trends and needs regarding kind of population and household growth, median household size decreasing, and kind of an increasing housing demand for smaller households and smaller, like more units who accommodate. So it's more households, but smaller households. And the limited housing supply being one of the, the main contributing factors of the rising housing prices in the area. So that's, you know, with all of this, we really, this was a concerted effort to really look at the areas that could potentially be sewer, could be expanded to, located near the, the cor, the corridors of the township. So you'll see it's really focused in that triangle for the most part, thereby preserving the existing low-density residential in the south of the township. So in terms of public input that we got, concerns about, we received concerns about the impact of the character of the township, this township being, and having been primarily rural, concerns about impact of different housing types on property values, impact on infrastructure, like roads, as well as natural resources. And then, in addition to those concerns, we also heard support for broadening available housing in the township. So our recommendation from the consulting team is, we are not proposing any edits to the map as it is and to the residential flex areas for a few reasons. Just is consistent with the goals that were set forth by the Board of Supervisors regarding missing middle housing. It addresses housing needs identified by the township and the county. And we really did limit it to areas that either have existing infrastructure or could accommodate existing infrastructure in the future. So with that, it's our third topic, I'd love to, we kind of talked about it a little earlier, but. So this area, it's still primarily residential in nature. So looking at residential and lodging uses, bed and breakfasts, single-unit detached, single-unit semi-attached, two-units, townhouses, so kind of like the spectrum, as well as multi-unit. Obviously, as we discussed, some of the infrastructure capacity issues go into the consideration of what can be built there. But all those housing types are permitted by right, as well as like mixed-use buildings as well, permitted by right. In that district, there are some, like, we call them civic and institutional uses, they're in another section of this table. So like places of worship or schools, you know, community centers, library, et cetera, would also be permitted in this district, because you're trying to encourage kind of a, a more walkable neighborhood with services within proximity to the residential areas. Some agricultural operations, not mushroom-related, but kind of crop farming, community garden. And then I think that's kind of where it, oh, daycare uses, some of that lower intensity, lower impact. Rachel.
Just one more question. Have you conferred with Aqua and Chester Water about what they're going to do and what they will do?
So I will defer to the township on that, because I know the township has talked to them.
Yeah, so I would say that this is zoning and those other components, water and sewer, that's why there's three different types of housing that you can put on these lots. So yes, Aqua's aware that, about capacity and the issues that that may need to be addressed in the future for, for the developments. But at the end of the day, it's a zoning, it's a zoning ordinance. Those other pieces are outside the zoning ordinance. So it's, it's permitting the use, the other restrictions, we have no control.
Yeah, well, they can tell you about anything. I know firsthand, I tried to get sewer at our, at our place, with one of my neighbor who needs a sewer. And they don't have, they said they don't have the capacity. Now, they, they're, they said that there's other things in the township that are going to require that capacity. Well, the only thing that I know is the one that's being built on Bancroft Road. Is there other ones that I don't know about?
So, so Thompson Road and Bancroft would already be included, they've already, they've already, they're not, they're not included in any.
That's not, no, that, our side, our side's in Avondale. So, you know, I don't think they're too, too, I don't think they're very good to work with, they, they just don't seem like they care. And that's typical, I mean, Chester Water don't care about anything, but I, I thought Aqua had a little bit more.
Yeah, I think something to keep in mind with the zoning ordinance too. So first of all, that's why single-family detached is so permitted in that area, right? So if, if sewer never expands or water never expands in certain areas within the residential flex, there, there's still something that those property owners can do with their, their properties without public utilities. Another thing is, I, I believe your current ordinance is from 1991, if I'm not mistaken, is that right? Eight, oh, eight, eighty-seven, okay. So you typically townships update their ordinances a little more frequently than that, but sometimes they don't, because of a variety of factors. And so when you're looking at this ordinance, you're thinking not just about what happens, you know, after this is adopted, you know, in a few months, but what is going to happen in a decade, right? You might have a lot of this still in place in a decade, and it could be a completely different landscape. So it's kind of like, you're, you're balancing existing reality with future opportunity. Any other feedback? On, and I guess, before I go into the next steps and then, I guess, public comment, I just, you know, I'd encourage the Planning Commission, if you haven't already, to, if there are certain areas that you're particularly interested in, like if parking is your jam, and you want to like look at that and get into our regulations there, or if you're really interested in like the uses, the use permissions by right, definitely take a look at that, the draft ordinance that you have before you. And I'm not sure, I'll, I'll defer to Robert on this, like the most appropriate way to, to submit comment. But we really, this is the time to hear from you, because we'll meet with the zoning task force in July. And if you don't have your input then, then it will get incorporated into the final draft, and then we'll be making edits kind of later on in the process. So really, this is your beach read for the month. Okay, we go to the next steps. So once again, just want to end on this, I'm not going to go over everything in detail as I did before. This is the first of many steps in kind of the, the final stage of the process. July 23rd is when our task force meeting is, so we definitely want your comments by then. And then we'll be, the current draft of the ordinance is dated April 21st, I believe. And that is going to be the draft that is out there until a final draft is published and or released sometime. We anticipate in August. So after the zoning task force has deliberated, based on your feedback and the public's feedback. So if you are online looking at the zoning ordinance, you can copy from April, that is the most updated zoning draft. And with that, yeah, any questions? And I, I'm happy to answer questions as they come up.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Samantha. This is a lovely presentation, thorough and organized, as usual. So as promised, the last portion of our meeting this evening is to gather some feedback from our neighbors and answer any, any of your questions if we can, and take your reactions and, and comments. And we'll start with you, sir. Yeah, no, just in, in, this is in general to the, the, everything that we've discussed tonight, or, or more generally about the zoning initiative.
My name is Brian April. That forms, and my colleague, Mr. DeBran, issued a, a letter. I just wanted to make sure everybody had a copy of that with some comments with respect to the agricultural issue that was discussed in the review that the planner. Up to the Edinburgh and Bishop boundary, that my client has 200 acres on the other side of Stone Road, outside of the, what's been designated on this draft ordinance as the EP district. That, that, there's a total of about 300 acres there that's currently used for basically mushroom agriculture. They are, they are obviously processing spent mushroom counters where we are, but on that side, but the, but the land and the uses are, are very similar in both areas. So, so my client's position and my office's review of the, of the, of the ordinance, it really doesn't make any planning sense not to include those lands in the EP district to allow the continuation of the, those, if there are agricultural uses. Moreover, the, one of the things that was mentioned, like Mr. Peaceful, you said, which I totally agree with, you don't want to, you don't want to provide something that will never happen. And most of those lands are, you can serve and we should. So you, you couldn't have the, that's definitely those RL, and you couldn't have those RL abuses on those lands as they exist today. So it doesn't really make planning sense to, to have that RL where it could ever really be utilized. Whereas RL, all you can really do, you can already restrict land, it's already in that agricultural, mushroom category of use, and making it non-conforming and restricting the rights of the land to continue and to expand that use as needed and come. It, it sets up, and I, I also know what the planner said, which is comments about you want to set a district bound, boundary at a road. If you look on the home zoning map, there are zoning districts that cross over all kinds of roads and are not set at all based on roadway limits. There's no particular law that I'm aware of that has made that says you have to do that. The real, the real law is they have to base them and district boundaries on sound land use plan. That's what the MPC requires, that's kind of the main law. And to me, it is nice to use the word where, where it fits, but the more germane question is, what's the sound plan for that area? What's, what's it being used for today? What's it likely to be used for in the future? And I understand that the Board of Supervisors has had a set goal when looking at this whole ordinance, and how they want this to come together when it gets adopted. But you still have, you still have to consider what's really there, what's developed. The problem with not including these lands in the EP district is that you're, you're, you're sucking out this, this use there, it's been there for a long time, it should be able to continue, it will continue, it has to continue, but the lands can serve as it is. So that's, that's sort of the first request, most of this laid out in this letter that my partner, uh, draft plan submitted. Secondly, the, the uses are permitted today in that residential district where they're locating the existing zoning. So if, if you're not inclined to extend the EP district to include those, those lands, at a minimum, you should allow those uses by, in, in, you propose RL construction, which encompasses that same, same land. Again, from my perspective, that's not the best way of planning in the circumstances, the reality of that land. Again, from my perspective, that's not the best way of planning in the, the circumstances, the reality of that land. Uh, but it would certainly be a better alternative to just taking it out altogether and making it non-conforming. The other issue, the other issue that you have that I've pointed out is you're really setting up to create an administrative problem, a legal problem, was the, that agriculture is obviously protected by Pennsylvania law through the acre and the one armor. So you, you're, you're putting the township in a position, you're putting the landowner in a position, uh, in a difficult position, where if you adopt it that way, it's going to be a long-term problem, uh, for the township and for the landowner. And I think ultimately, they're not going to change what's there. You're just going to create a, a problem, you're going to create a problem that's grounded not in sound land use plan principles, but in sort of a goal, uh, to cut something off on a, on a lawn, on a road that doesn't really make logical sense. We look at all the facts and history, look at use of the land, restriction of it. So my client's request is that you either extend the EP of land, and that, that I know that the planner, I've received comments that affect and recommend not, that you not do that. I don't know what that recommendation is based on. I, I, I can't make many sound planning decisions like that. But secondarily, not going to let that change, then we would request that at a minimum, you allow, you allow the uses, and they're spelled out in the letter, in the second section, um, too. To be by right in that RL, this, that, that request, if anything, this seeking, answering any questions that you have in the room.
Yeah, yeah. No, thank you very much for coming in and thank you for, um, sharing your client's concerns and for documenting so, uh, thoughtfully for us.
May I just say, that's Mr. Nagel. Um, so Laurel Valley, Laurel Valley does own other lots in the EP? Three lots, is that right?
They have two, they have two lots that are below the Star Road, doesn't end up.
But north of Star Road, there are three lots that are in the EP that Laurel Valley owns? Okay, like on Chesco Views, it would show, it shows that there are three, but I don't know, that's not an official title.
Okay.
And do you know the, um, the watershed, so the, the lower valley land off of Egypt Road and Star? That I think goes into white, middle run, middle, White Clay? Cause the planning commission had the, the lot split before it a few months ago, for that exact parcel. And I think one of the members brought up the issue of the water quality being affected potentially, but that was by. East Branch, thank you. Thank you for correcting that. And, and then the E, the EP as it stands on the map, the enterprise zone, I would think that probably drains into the same. But it, it could be that it goes north of Gap Newport Road. That, that was all. Thank you. It, it wasn't related to agricultural use. It was just related to protect, protecting that watershed.
We have a lot of our neighbors here tonight, so please raise your hand if you'd like to ask a question or have comments. You, sir.
I'm here. I have a link one to back eighteen sixty-four, I bought it in nineteen seventy-two. And then right now, I'll be considered residential low density. No mention of ready farm. I don't, green space, oak space, don't.
Yes, so, um, I, without knowing all the details of your property, I would assume, is it like a crop kind of farm?
I don't know. I'm going to, I'm not staying in law.
No, we have done a site visit. I don't know your property and I don't know your prop. Okay, so crop farming, if it, I'm assuming it's crop farming, um, would be permitted by right in the residential low density. Livestock? Livestock would be, um, permitted by special exception in the low density.
No way. I've been here before you had any zone. I'm no special exception.
Well, well, I will say that the, the proposed, so any existing use, uh, would be allowed to continue operating as a non-conforming use?
I don't like that. I did use by right, no non-conforming, no green farm. I've been here for eighteen fifty-four, bought in seventy-two, long before zone. I'm no, I'm no, I'm no lost farm.
Well, yeah, that, thank you very much. And I, I appreciate your intensity of your feeling about this. And, and we, we talked a little bit earlier about the nature of our discussions around impacts to people that live in the township. You know, there's a lot of initiatives that we have underway now that are designed, um, to improve, the township for all of us. You know, we've got a traffic, uh, initiative that's underway. We've got the, um, the development plan that's underway. Uh, there's the zoning initiative that's underway. A lot of the, the things that we have in place today, zoning is a good example, um, dates from back to nineteen eighty-seven. So what is that, thirty-eight years old? Yes, sir. I, I understand. There's a lot of problems with, uh, an outdated zoning ordinance. And, and, and trust me, there are lots of issues with an outdated zoning ordinance. We're addressing, um, the issues with the outdated zoning ordinance by refreshing it. Um, refreshing it, uh, with an eye towards making life better for the people that live and work here today, as well as try and set us up for the next, um, what, what may come in the next ten or twenty years. Who knows when the next time we get to, uh, a new zoning ordinance? I'm sorry?
One thing is certainly wrong. Number one, that's a cultural people, seven illegal people in three nineteen. Gives us a spatial reduction in our taxes. Keep us wild unless we change use, and then we got the, that's one. Number two, I have so much development rights on that farm. I'm fully dedicated to that. I'm planning on passing a farm, and I've got other interests in the narrative. We set up open, uh, to buy the development rights in here and bought and sold, we put two million dollars in there and couldn't spend a nickel. Well, here's what I want, what you think. If we buy the development rights off, that's for a month, that's need for school. Now, township's interested, I have nothing against parks, we're the trailer. But what's your budget now? Over half a million dollars plus hiring some people? Tremendous cost on the tax payer to maintain, but it's good for the people, which I don't disagree with. You take, first of all, when you put in a farmer's name, and he'll maintain, it won't put to a cent, it's all killing it all. I'm hurt, I'm wrong. I don't understand what this missing middle town did, did miss you did.
Well, we, yeah, that's, it's a good question. It's a good question. And, and some of the language that we use in the zoning exercise is, is kind of technical and maybe that's a, that's an example of it. But if you look around the township, what you see is a lot of single-family alone homes on one-acre lots, right, at one end. And then there's, um, small apartments on the other, but there isn't a lot in between. And that, and that missing in-between part is, is what we mean when we say the missing middle. So that's like a duplex, a triplex, a fourplex. So it's, it's a little bit bigger than apartment, but it's not quite like a single-family home. Does that make sense?
Why is that? It's the reason you came in the recent state. Now you're pushing me out. I've been here long enough to anybody who needs help and benefits. I'm not against it, I'm with people. You could go around my neighborhood and ask the park to hook up on the neighbor, and no one should do it. I, I had all my farm participated with Strad water for probably eighteen months. Trapped in the water runoff, waterway down the stream, the weirdest out there. Reimined water so as to promote French people so as to put a hook on all my property, wanting to hoard and bring it forward. And I said, my wife and I also were one of five, I believe, in two thousand and sixteen, to get the clean water and work from conservation district in Pennsylvania. I was up there with the secretary of agriculture and he stopped me. I pitched you on my website, I'm a little, uh, I understand about what you want to do, but don't put me in any streets that I've never been in. What's wrong? Just like this one, he's no different. As a matter of fact, that culture, patterns are right here, named farm. I found that since nineteen seventy-six. Started eight bird code, and hooks, carison. I farmed them since seven two. Laurel Valley. Go clean the forty-one, cross over the forty-one, get in the Warren Run. We got agriculture from one end to the other. What's the matter? Why, why can't somebody understand it? To stop this, push us out and hold all of that just now?
Well, there certainly isn't a desire to push anybody out. That, that, if the, if the zoning, if the new zoning ordinance went into effect tomorrow, you could still be a farmer. Nobody's saying you can't be a farmer.
May I ask a question? So I don't recall the details as to why the crop farm will be considered an allowable use, but livestock would not. So from my perspective, I'd ask the task force to revisit the livestock as well as the crop, because forgive my farming ignorance. My husband gets on my case all the time because I don't understand the cow versus the horse. And.
Watson, who? Don't run, at least, maybe go to the lab and, and I know the fellow's correct.
And so I have, and so I have great respect. My, my husband's family has been here for a couple hundred years, my, and trust me, I'm cut. Okay, well, later, not, not for the public. So, but seriously, sir, I have, we have a great respect for the history as well as the mushroom industry, the, the crops, the livestock. So if, again, if we could ask the task force to un, have a greater understanding and make sure that the farming communities, regardless if you're farming a mushroom, you're farming a cow, you're farming a corn, horses, exactly, uh, pigs, cows, chickens, what, whatever the little critters might be. If we could broaden our mind and just understand that our ignorance is limiting our definitions, if you don't mind. No.
We, we, we did talk a lot about agriculture in, in, in all the, the sessions that we had and we're talking about zoning. They didn't come up specifically tonight because we're, we're talking about the three focus areas. But rest assured, everybody in the planning commission and everybody in the zoning commission is, um, extraordinarily aware of the rich history of agriculture in New Garden Township. Well, a, a, agriculture is, is in all of the zoning materials. And I don't know if you've had it, had a chance to take a look at, at some of the stuff that's on the township website, but, um, all of the, the, the new zoning, uh, ordinance, the draft is, is there. The, um, zoning, uh, grid is there. And I think if you take a look at it, you'll see, um, that, uh, attention to, um, agriculture and, and farming and livestock is a, a big part of that document, just not something that we didn't, we talked about a lot tonight. Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Uh, eighteen oh six, yeah. Yeah, yeah. I, I love it here. Yeah, yeah.
Please, uh, your neighbor, ma'am, would you, are you trying to raise your hand to speak? Oh, okay.
Thank, thank, thank you for coming out, sir. Um, uh, you, ma'am. Hi.
She's that.
Exactly right. You don't get tax rateable in this township. You got to do something about the tax because you put burn on. All the residents, just continues to happen. You either cut your spending, which it seems like they don't want to do around here. Or you gotta, the residential will not be this township. It will not. You gotta have, the only thing, the only chance they had in the last twenty years was shopping center and people in Somerset, they fought it. They gotta throw them out.
Save through the deal.
Pardon me?
Save through, three dollars per square foot, two or less.
That's true.
I think because they call upon the condominiums that's staying on.
That's right. She is exactly right. This township is a rural rural township for years and years and years. It never got on the map until they built Somerset Lake and Hertford. You got four hundred fifteen homes in Somerset Lake and four hundred some in Hertford. That that was all in one end of the township. That was okay up there because it was right around where the sewer plants were. But in in the countryside, where the where Barclay's Hook Hook's farm is, you don't want to cover that place with houses. There's enough houses out there now. And they're all on one-acre lots. You gotta have, when you when you build a house, and it's on site, you gotta have a place or supplementary field. Some of those places don't even have that. They have a quarter of an acre of this that they were built years and years ago. You're never going to see sewers spending out there. I was never going to do that unless you got a developer come in here and buy a mass piece of property. And then what kind of township are you going to end up with? You're going to end up with what she's saying. It's not, it's not what people moved here for or lived here for.
Yeah, no, that that's that's an excellent point, Bob, and and your and your point is well made. I I will say something, though, about the nature of the zoning process. You know, there's, there's a lot of colors up there. There's ten, you know, ten different zones. But they're largely contiguous, right? There's not a lot of little fingers going off, which which means we didn't look at every single piece of property in the township and say, what is this right for? Right? We we thought about the the issues with the existing zoning plan, the goals of enabling the township's plans, resolving some of the challenges, and and use the zoning map as a tool to do that. But because it provides for something and it's in the, you know, medium-green area, doesn't mean that anything that could happen in medium-green is gonna happen in medium-green. You know, we talked a little bit about sewer, we talked a little bit about highway access, talked about developable property. There's, in in reality, some things are only going to happen in certain places. But part of the recognition is it's likely that this zoning ordinance is going to last for a while. So we wanted to include as much flexibility as we could to enable the township to make the right to be well-positioned for things that may happen. But it certainly doesn't mean in places where you have constraints on infrastructure that any of the things that might be provided for for the overall zone are going to happen in a spot within that zone where it just simply wouldn't work. And and everybody wants the character of the township to be consistent. You know, we live here, too. This is a great place to live, and we wanted to stay that way, certainly. But thank you very much for your comment, sir.
Under the proposed changes in zoning map, those agricultural units that have already existed are essentially grandfathered in. You're not telling them they have to shut down their operations, correct?
No, we, there's, there's lots of agriculture operations today that are are inconsistent with their with their current zoning, right? So so the the fact that something isn't provided for doesn't mean anybody's going to get shut down. It would just be, you know, a variance. Well, I'm I'm not the township solicitor, so I can't, I can't stipulate the specifics of the the legality. But as a practical matter, somebody that is operating in a certain fashion today is not going to get a knock on their door from the township, instructing them to stop if the color on the map says that, you know, it's not right.
Generations upon generations.
Oh, absolutely. Right. Yeah, and and zoning is scary. You know, it's complicated. It uses a bunch of uncommon words. So it's, it's hard to get your head around. And there's lots of things that you have to sort of integrate to really understand what's happening. So I think it's one of the things in the the many times that we've met with our neighbors in the previous public outreach was it it takes a while to kind of understand what what is happening. But I will say that the the team that has been working on this in support of us, Samantha and her team and the township have been doing their best to be transparent, to help people understand what we're doing, why we're doing it, where to find out more, taking a hard look at everything that we put online to make sure people can find everything that they need to know. And host events like this so people can come out and and share their questions and concerns. And we're listening. Yeah, please.
Yes, I'm not a solicitor, but just a note on agricultural uses in particular. As Speaker noted earlier, there are state-level kind of right-to-farm acts laws that supersede local authority. So like in the zoning ordinance, there's something written that says if there is another kind of law in, you know, on the books that, you know, is at the state level, it supersedes the local zoning ordinance. So and that's especially the case, I think, for agriculture. So it's just like a kind of a unique use issue.
Thank you, Samantha.
So I'm just looking at the, um, we're actually, we're increasing it to twenty-five percent. So could be extended or expanded on the same lot, provided the extension or alteration be limited to twenty-five percent of the gross floor area of the building. So that's for structure. And then I think it's similar in terms of use. So we wanted that flexibility in there that exists in the existing ordinance and actually increased it a little bit.
Sir, in the back. That that's right. There's, there's a number of different names that we have for the current zones is in the current zoning ordinance. You know, uniform development, R one, R two, R three. All of those are being replaced with the with the new names to better conform to prevailing best practice and and update the 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 zoning ordinance that we have. I'm not sure I understand the question. Okay. Yes. Mixed-use corridor, yeah. Um, I don't, I don't know that individual initiatives are being reconciled between the current zoning ordinance and the proposed zoning ordinance. I guess it would depend on the timing. If a development initiative happens after this process is complete and a new zoning ordinance is in place, then that development would be subject to the new zoning rules. And if it happens before, it would be subject to the current ones. But individual projects aren't being factored into the decision-making or the 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 development plans. The the Village Center is really along Baltimore Pike. It's Tough Kineman. And then the Village Gateway is on either end of that. I'm not sure under. Well, you know, in addition to having a very rich agricultural heritage within New Garden Township, there's a very rich historical heritage as well. You know, lots of our neighbors have historic properties. Lots of our neighbors live next to historic properties. And that's part of the charming character of New Garden Township. I think the protections that we have for historic properties are certainly not limited to what may or may not be in a zoning ordinance. And I don't know that zoning is the principal mechanism to defend properties like that. I probably have to defer to some of. Could you comment on that, Robert? I see a couple of hands in the back, ma'am. Hi. Thank you. Ma'am? One of the things that you helped us with earlier was to get our YouTube recording sorted. And that recording is going to be available. So and if your friends and neighbors weren't able to dial in, that recording will be available for them to view, yeah.
We have asked for, that is, we, um, you know, um, along.
Thank you. Um, sir.
Be, are they just look nice online?
Yeah.
So, yes, um, it, it would be permitted, so right now, permitted in the same building, and something, we did receive your comments, and something that we want to look into, is just confirming, um, and if we're not very clear with it, making it clear that it would, multiple uses would be permitted on the same lot as well, not just within the same structure, so that's something that, um, makes sense for those areas, as mixed use areas. Exactly. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
We did that shooting, that Baltimore, I think, got, they want, for, the, third, is one of those, but everything in the middle there is disconnected, this, per, hillway, and when you lose trees in a, in a, in a, where people are called, um, or if you had a neutral, your section being worked on by a poll deal, a couple of years ago, where, where, where the merchants would be, how many people enjoyed not being able to make that, and they just come to, I mean, these are mine, you have existing homes and businesses that are already here, but, you put ten trees down the road, you add multi-family buildings on the open land, or existing land, being used right now, and I can't assume, I can't, that, and how these roads can, can handle, the additional ones, that, that was already there, and I know, uh, Mr. Keith, when we had this conversation at one of the meetings, or, that, this basis, and there is some kind of a trap, including program, this being, uh, worked on, or.
That's underway right now.
And, and by virtue of following that, uh, allowing people ten, one years down the road to, pretty much, wish they could, uh, that position provided, um, and only, that's what I think this, this, if that's, but, township, in terms of, people getting around, and sort of, all they want, it's like, this transportation, is, 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 is dire need of serious consideration.
Yeah, you're, you're right, and, and, you know, zoning is, is, uh, a big complicated project, but it, it's limited to the zoning, the township is also taking a look at expectations for growth in the township over the next ten years, the next thirty years, what does that look like? The number of people that may come here, the number of businesses that may come here, and then what are the impacts of, um, those, that growth on the roads, and, um, making, um, plans to, uh, propose some improvements, and to ask for help from the state to, um, implement some improvements, so that the traffic, um, stays at an acceptable level, even if we have some growth that we expect over the next ten years to, to thirty years, but yeah, you're, you're right. Yeah, thank you. Anything come in online that we can address? Okay. Um, any other questions or, or comments or reactions? Okay, well, I, this was a long meeting, um, I appreciate everybody's time and attention, um, I'd really like to thank all of the members of the, um, zoning commission, I'd really like to thank Samantha and her team for all of their hard work, we'll continue to, um, include, uh, our neighbors in the process as we go through this, um, in the manner that Samantha, uh, mentioned, so, thanks again for coming out, everybody have a, a nice evening. And we're adjourned.